Good morning and welcome to the regular meeting of City Council for Tuesday, August 31st, 2021. I have a meeting announcement. Council will be meeting in a hybrid format until further notice. We encourage speakers to continue joining virtually as there will be a limited number of seats available in council chambers. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Reverend Burgess.
Here.
Ms. Coghill.
Here.
Ms. Gross.
Here.
Ms. Kraus.
Here.
Mr. Lavelle.
Here.
Mr. O'Connor.
Here.
Ms. Strasburger.
Here.
Mr. Wilson.
Here.
Mrs. Cal Smith, President.
Here. Thank you. As we join from our remote locations and in person, please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance and remain for a moment of silence afterwards. And I just ask that you keep my cousin in your prayers and his family. He passed away this weekend. He has 10 children. So he's also the cousin of Josh Cal, State Representative. He's keeping a prayer.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And our next order of business is proclamation. And I have one to be read in person. This is the first one since we returned, and it's fitting that goes to our DPW workers in construction. Come on up, guys.
Right here.
You can come up here. Oh, wait, can... I didn't think of that one through. Ms. Coghill, you want to come up with us?
Sure.
I live in Brooklyn.
It might be nice.
It might be. I'm going to try to read this with my glasses on, but they keep fogging up. Two really great employees. We have a lot of great employees in the city of Pittsburgh. I talk about them every week, how they got us through the pandemic. They do many great things on and off the job, coaching in our communities, doing all kinds of things. Well, these two are local heroes now. Whereas John Menard, who began with the city in March 2017, and Gary Eisenberg, who started in July 2017, both worked for the Construction Division of the Department of Public Works, which is an amazing division. They do a lot of work. And whereas, on Wednesday, August 25th, 2021, John and Gary... John and Gary were completing the steps that connect Stratmore Street and Crafton Boulevard to the Trolley Trail. And whereas, running nearby was John Gallagher, a District 2 resident. Was a District 2 resident who was half a mile away from finishing an 18-mile run when he began experiencing bad cramping and severe dehydration from 86-degree humid... on the 86-degree humid day. And whereas, both Menard, Mr. Menard and Mr. Eisenberg recognized the struggling resident as he sat down to gain some energy and finish his run. They gave Mr. Gallagher some cold water, and they helped him into their air-conditioned truck to cool him down. And whereas, after about five minutes, Mr. Gallagher was going to complete his run, but John and Gary knew he shouldn't, and they drove him safely home at the last half-mile, it was all uphill. And now therefore be it resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby thank John and Gary for the work they do as part of the Construction Division and commend them for them going above and beyond their duties to help a city resident in need. And be it further resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby declare Tuesday, August 31st, 20... sorry, 2021 to be John Menard and Gary Eisenberg Day in the City of Pittsburgh.
motion to approve.
All in favor?
Aye.
Proclamation. I have to tell you, that was hard reading. My glasses were fogging up, and when I take them off, I couldn't see. So I'm going to wipe this down and give you both your proclamations. There's two of them up here. I'll give them to you in a second. Councilman Coghill, do you want to say something first, and then Director Newman, Assistant Deputy Director Newman, and then you guys say something? I want to say first that the resident contacted me and asked that they be recognized because he was so impressed that they took such time and such care, and he said that they really went above and beyond making sure that he was okay. And so I just really want to make sure that you know how grateful the resident really was and how grateful we are for your work. And you did do many things without a proclamation. That's why you deserve one.
When we seen him, we knew something was immediately wrong. So he was sitting on the steps, and it was very narrow to drive by, and he did not kind of move or whatever. And I shut the truck off, and I said, you know, "Are you all right?" And asked if he wanted an ambulance. He refused. At that point, I said, "What do you think, Gary?" I said, "Maybe we should start the truck up and put him back in there," or whatever. He kind of refused at that point as well, but I guess we coaxed him in and gave him water, and we continued to do our little part of the job that was left. At that time, I said, "What do you think, Gary? Should we clear..." We had the backseat. I said, "Should we clear the backseat?" And he said, "No, just you take him home," and he would stay there. And, you know, I just took him home. I didn't walk him to his house, but he was very grateful and thankful at the time. He said he couldn't even open up his hands. When I shook his hand, it was very clammy and nasty or whatever, but I said, "Take a shower." But I'm not a medical expert. I said, "Don't turn on the cold water." I said, "Get yourself up," or whatever. Thank you. I guess we would have did it no matter what.
And the Gallagher family is the family that provides a lot of you to be... So you really help us save you.
He wanted to walk with his run, but I was like, "No, I'll take it. It doesn't matter," or whatever. But I didn't know that it was even not illegal to do it or something.
We've always known that John and Gary... Marcel Newman, Assistant Director of Public Works. We've known that John and Gary have always done a really good job, and we're really proud to have them on our team. I want to thank the resident for recognizing that and the general public in general, that often have the time to give back to us and give us feedback, but I really appreciate the good feedback and the bad feedback. We take it all. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm going to hold the proclamation.
Just take some.
I'm going to take the photo. I will. There we go.
Sean.
There you go.
Right here.
Is that good? Thank you.
It's everybody.
Do you have another wipe?
Good.
Another wipe.
Gotcha.
But even with... It makes such a mess. Yeah.
My brother just moved. He just moved. Part.
Good on.
Oh, good. Which one is it?
We just want to have a material list today.
No, this is for a guy named Tony.
Yeah, I know. I know. We just did the ones on Sweet. We're starting? I would say Monday at the latest, if not tomorrow or the next day.
I'm going to tell them.
It's going to be so.
I'm going to say within the next week. Don't start. Thank you, guys. Okay, and we have a proclamation. We have two proclamations to be read into the record.
Councilwoman Strasburger presents Bill Number 1811. Now therefore be it resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby celebrate Ms. Ruth Sacks on her 100th birthday, honors her for her long life and prosperity, and wishes her many more. And be it further resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby declare August 27, 2021 to be Ruth Sacks Day in the City of Pittsburgh. Council President Cal Smith presents Bill Number 1812. Now therefore be it resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby honor the memory of Reverend Dr. Samuel Wilbert Williams Jr., who has been a spiritual father to many in the community, even non-church-goers, and has been referred to many by ministers as the leaders, leader. And be it further resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby declare Friday, August 27, 2021, to be Reverend Dr. Samuel Wilbert Williams Jr. Day in the City of Pittsburgh. And Council President Cal Smith presents Bill Number 1813. Now therefore be it resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby recognize these African-American businessmen and pioneers with the designation of Third Avenue as Pittsburgh's Black Wall Street. And be it further resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby declare September 2nd through the 5th, 2021, to be Pittsburgh's Soul Food Festival Days in the City of Pittsburgh.
Thank you. Can I have a motion to approve in a second?
So moved.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Those proclamations are approved. Thank you. And our next order of business is public comment. Let me get to that. And I would like to remind everyone that the rules of council state that comments are limited to matters of concern, official action, or deliberation which are or may be before City Council. Profanity and threats will not be permitted. May we have the first speaker, please? And the first registered speaker is Drew Miller. Drew Miller?
Yes. Good morning, Council, and thank you for allowing me to speak today. My name is Drew Miller, and I'm a resident who has been living in the South Side for almost 10 years now. I love the South Side. It is one of the oldest, most authentic, and most diverse communities in Pittsburgh. But as you know, the South Side has been plagued recently by the vacant storefronts and the South Side works, and by the recent violence, shootings, and murder on the other end of the South Side flats. What we have lost is our sense of community. In order to get that sense of community back, I propose the creation of a South Side Community Center. I believe this community center should be located in the heart of the South Side, right on East Carson Street between the 17th and 18th blocks. I have also found the perfect building to house such a community center. It's the building known as 1713 and 1715 East Carson Street, which currently houses the business Cosmo &amp; Carson. You might say, "Well, we just can't go and take this property," but the truth is, yes, you can. The 2005 U.S. Supreme Court case of Kelo v. City of New London held that a city could use its power of eminent domain to transfer property from one private owner to another private entity to further economic development. Notably, the court solidified the fact that the property taken by eminent domain does not have to be abandoned, blighted, or condemned. As long as it furthers economic development, the city could do it. Cosmo &amp; Carson is only open three days a week. For most of the week, it just sits there, not making any money. But even more insidious is the fact that when it is opened, it is costing the taxpayers money, as this nightclub has been continually linked to the increasing violence in the South Side and is the reason for the increased police presence and altered traffic patterns. This in turn is leading to a reduction in property values and increased panic and anxiety among the South Side residents. The harm it is causing outweighs any type of economic benefit for which there is none. The most effective way to cure this cancer is for this council to use its power of eminent domain to acquire the building located 1713 and 1715 East Carson Street and to turn it into a community center. Accordingly, I respectfully ask that this council consider using its power to create a better, safer, and stronger community. Thank you.
Thank you. And our next speaker is Dr. Ronald Miller. Good morning, Dr. Miller.
Dr. Ronald Miller, 40 Bells River Avenue, Pittsburgh, PA. Sahar Mo Ermerga. That's Pachto. Global Intelligence Society candidate for Mayor, Pittsburgh, 2021. Center for Global Studies, international interdisciplinary founder. Pitt has no legal right to this name. Only we do. At an Allegheny County Council meeting, 10 September 2013, Black African-American Councilor William Russell Robinson said, quote, "That Paduto had signed on to the Black Agenda." If County Councilor Pat Katena or City Councilor Corey O'Connor, perceived to be white European Americans, said that Paduto had signed on to the White Agenda, would that be okay? No, I don't think so. It would be called racist. Identity politics. Let's chuck it. If Pittsburgh Blacks vote for a Black mayor candidate primarily because he or she is Black, and that's all right, then Pittsburgh Whites can do it for their white candidate. There is an undercurrent in this city and in this county about this. At no county or Pittsburgh City Council meeting, publicly or privately, in the 2020 election cycle, no Democratic Party member could be heard to call Republicans fascist or heartless capitalists. Oh, no. No Republican Party people call Democrats communist. Oh, no. Oh, yeah. Ideological subjective lens politics. Let's chuck that, too. Let's do governance from more objective ideas that are derived from, based on the best information and the sharpest intelligence of our people. Does better government come from vulgarizing candidates or officials' racial identity, or from valorizing it and vulgarizing his or her party ideology? From turning a competitor's person or point of view into vomit? No, absolutely not. Tear Bia Ladolo, Afghanistan.
Thank you. Our next registered speaker is Stephen Kelly. Good morning, Mr. Kelly.
Good morning. I'm here today to talk about COVID-19 paid sick days. First, I'd like to thank the members of council who supported the extension of COVID-19 sick days. Thank you. I'm also here to address Councilman Coghill. My name is Stephen Kelly. I am a cleaner downtown and a proud member of SEIU 32BJ. I am also an elected official of that union. I am here today on behalf of thousands of 32BJ members who work in this city. We are disappointed that you abstained from the vote for COVID sick days, and I am here to present this petition to you. We have risked our health in maintaining and cleaning buildings, securing and protecting properties, and preparing meals for students. Our members also protected and maintained this building and your office all the while you held council meetings remotely. How could you choose not to support workers? We are living through a global pandemic that is systematically impacting frontline workers like me. In our union alone, we have lost over 100 brothers and sisters to this disease. The largest employers in Pittsburgh should not have to be told by City Council what the right thing is to do. But this is oftentimes the case. I understand why our... I don't understand why our largest employers would even take the risk of their health and their workers and their businesses just to save pennies on the dollar. Workers oftentimes do not and cannot afford to recover and take a day off because they are sick. I recall a moment in which I went to work, and I was speaking with a lady. I wasn't thinking. I was speaking with her, and she was visibly ill. This is pre-COVID. And I wasn't thinking, and 24 to 40 hours later, I caught it. And then shortly thereafter, the people in our shop caught the same flu that this lady had come to work with. That is how important this legislation is to us. The public health of Pittsburgh cannot afford to take those risks during the pandemic. Common sense should tell employers that if workers are infecting each other, our productivity will go down, which will lead to more... which will lead to losing more than the cost of providing COVID-19 sick days. I just want to end my statement by saying we are paying close attention to City Council. I hope that you Congressmen, Councilmen Coghill, would be more considerate when taking votes, especially when they impact thousands of workers. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Naomi Mullen. Naomi, you on line today?
Sorry for your loss, Teresa.
That's okay. Good morning, Naomi. How are you?
Good. Good morning. I'm from Bonner, and my speech is about Anthony Hamlet and about school, and title is "Stop Anthony Hamlet's Further Non-Compliance." Shady trees, not shady deals. Anthony Hamlet was found guilty of ethical violations and charged with repayment of thousands of dollars. He is a primary party to the non-compliance with PPS policy and the sale of Bonner School as well. The policy states, "The superintendent or designee working with the solicitor shall, to the best of their ability, enlist the involvement, support, and guidance of local community groups when considering the sale of property within their community." That must have been an inconvenient part of the policy, since they disregarded the problems enumerated by the four community members at the private tour of the school. Pat Morissette and Gregory Coyle were made fully aware of the issues, yet the solicitor and superintendent moved forward with a vote by the board under the lie of community support. There was a town hall meeting without a single voice of consent for the vague plan proposed by Gregory Coyle. The superintendent failed to send anyone to that large meeting. This is the third time that a community member has requested this of City Council. To create a resolution to stop the rezoning of the Bonner School Building. Rezoning cannot occur unless it is approved by the city. Be part of the solution to the wrongdoings of Superintendent Anthony Hamlet. Get his hand out of the cookie jar. Show your integrity and help Councilman Coghill turn the building into a green space. Mayor Paduto ought to be completely in favor of this solution since he traveled to Paris to sign a climate agreement. Thanks for your help. Tear down problem buildings, not safe, stable neighborhoods. Shady trees, not shady deals.
Thank you. And our next speaker is Dawn Plummer. Dawn? Is she online? She's online? She's on... You're on mute, Dawn. Could you unmute your phone?
There we go. Is this working? Okay. Hi, my name is Dawn Plummer. I live in the Point Breeze neighborhood of Pittsburgh, and I wanted to just reflect on the American Rescue Plan spending bills that are, you know, will be presented today. First, I wanted to thank City Council members who have met with members of our network and our staff to talk about our work on food systems and our proposal for a food justice fund, and we do hope to be able to speak with everyone on council and look forward to that opportunity. In terms of the, I believe it's four bills that are presented, that will be presented today, I had two specific questions. One is around the, you know, it was my understanding, there's just such a significant amount of money, I believe over $100 million, that is up for authorization for transfer. And, you know, that being such a significant amount of money, the timeline that this is all moving is concerning as a citizen. But my question is that, you know, the spending plan that was approved by council, it seems to me that, you know, the spending was scheduled out for several years, but it looks like the transfers have been sort of all collapsed into one transfer that would happen with the authorization vote. So that seems concerning to me. I think that's different than what we understood was going to be the case. And I also am curious, just in terms of, you know, the guidance and responsibility of the city to report on. So when funds are being transferred to other entities outside of city control, are there, you know, what are the terms of the contracts? Are there, you know, ability to get funds back if they're not spent, or they're not spent properly in accordance to the guidance and that kind of thing? Just in terms of public oversight for such a tremendous investment in our community, we want to make sure that those funds are spent properly. I'm sure you share that concern. So I was just curious about the, you know, the terms of those contracts, and, you know, otherwise it just sort of appearing to be sort of blank checks, which I'm assuming is not the case. But just one, you know, wanted to ask some questions about that. And I think that was all I wanted to ask, and I look forward to the conversation. Thank you.
Thank you. And do we have any speakers in chambers?
Thank you very much. My name is Laura Chu Weens. I'm the Executive Director of Pittsburghers Republic Transit. My understanding today is that today, more than two-thirds of the total allocation that was planned to be spent with the American Rescue Plan Act was, is ready to go out the door, and that nearly one-third of the total amount that the city had received through the ARPA funding. And there's the suggestion today that it could even be accelerated even faster to get the money out the door. And that's not what we understood when the last ARPA budget vote was rushed through council in July. That was a vote and an allocation that was already deeply flawed, but at a minimum, we were made to believe that it would be spaced out over several years, allowing for the possibility of amendments to address equity concerns and changing needs and transparency, and some ownership of those funds by the new administration. At least, that's been one of the talking points used by the current administration to placate the very, the hundreds of engaged public residents that have been active in this conversation. But our understanding, my understanding is that the legislation being proposed today by Councilmember Lavelle would prohibit that. It would walk back even the minimum idea of a responsive or equitable process over time to address the needs of the most vulnerable residents in a time of crisis by front-loading these payments. And as Dawn mentioned, that it appears to be a blank check given all at once to private or quasi-private entities for services not yet rendered nor clearly defined. And so I ask, where is the contract with ONE PGH, the URA, the PWSA, the deliverables, the public process, and oversight, and accountability to the Treasury guidance? You know, the payments to ONE PGH are even more egregious than that of PWSA or URA, because it's basically the administration funding itself. It is almost certain that some of the individuals designing or proposing the use of these funds within the administrations will be direct beneficiaries of that funding when they leave office. And I think it's absurd that I had to rush down here to speak, having found out about this with less time than is required to be able to sign up to give comment. And I think, you know, what a miserable simulation of a public process where hundreds of residents can speak, asking for a minimum, a delay on the spending, in line with what every other city basically is doing with the American Rescue Act process. And yet, here we are. And in our city, meanwhile, residents are facing evictions in record numbers, as the Supreme Court has struck down the eviction's moratorium, and the expanded unemployment has expired, despite tens of thousands of people being out of work, and childcare and schooling is uncertain, and unable to meet the need of our parents, and businesses remain shuttered due to... remain shuttered due to the coronavirus and the Delta surge. So I hope that, I hope that council will consider a, a more equitable process where we're not giving away the, the limited resources, the abundance of wealth that we've gotten through this and give us a chance to actually take care of our residents.
Thank you. And are, do we have any other speakers? Seeing no further speakers, we'll now move on to our unfinished business. Oh, I'm sorry. We'll now move on to our presentation of papers. And Councilman Burgess, Chair of Urban Recreation.
I have the papers, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilman. Good morning.
Good morning.
Councilman Coghill, Chair of Public Works. Thank you. Good morning, Councilman.
Councilman Coghill presents Bill Number 1788. Resolution authorizing the mayor and director of the Department of Public Works to enter into a five-year agreement with the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania Department of Transportation for winter traffic services for the period beginning October 15th and ending April 30th of 2026. Bill Number 1790. Resolution granting unto Willow Fortune LLC their successors and assigns the privilege and license to construct, maintain and use at their own cost and expense a new project in sign at 3508 Butler Street in the 6th Ward, 7th Council District. Bill Number 1791. Resolution granting unto Jordan and Stephen Schmitz their successors and assigns the privilege and license to construct, maintain and use at their own cost and expense to replace an existing retaining wall and parking pad that extends five feet into the right-of-way located on Kalamazoo Way behind the residence of 1439 Morningside Avenue in the 10th Ward, 7th Council District. Bill Number 1792. Resolution granting unto Garden Theater Block LLC their successors and assigns the privilege and license to construct, maintain and use at their own cost and expense to install the low-grade footing and beams under the sidewalk at 6 West North Avenue in the 22nd Ward, 1st Council District. Bill Number 1793. Resolution granting unto 3213 Penn LLC their successors and assigns the privilege and license to construct, maintain and use at their own cost and expense to install two entrance canopies in one bus shelter canopy at 3213 Penn Avenue in the 6th Ward, 7th Council District. Bill Number 1794. Resolution granting unto Oakdale Development LLC their successors and assigns the privilege and license to construct, maintain and use at their own cost and expense three new projecting light fixtures at 3824 Penn Avenue, 6th Ward, 7th Council District. Bill Number 1795. Resolution granting unto Hullet Development Triangle LP their successors and assigns the privilege and license to construct, maintain and use at their own cost and expense a fire escape on an existing building 112 above the sidewalk at 701 Smithfield Street, 2nd Ward, 6th Council District.
Thank you. And Councilman Coghill, you have a waiver for Bill 1792?
Yes. Motion to waive the rules on Bill Number 1792.
Thank you, Councilman. Do we have second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
The bill will appear on tomorrow's standing committee agenda. Thank you, Councilman. And Councilwoman Gross, Chair of Intergovernmental Affairs.
Madam President.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
Councilwoman Gross presents Bill Number 1796. Resolution authorizing the mayor and the director of the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure on behalf of the city to enter into a corporation agreement with the Western Pennsylvania Conservancy for maintenance of certain plantings and other planting-related infrastructure in the public rights of way throughout the city at no cost to the city.
Thank you. And Councilman Kraus, Chair of Human Resources.
Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. Good morning, Councilman.
Good morning.
Councilman Kraus presents Bill Number 1797. Resolution providing for the issuing of a warrant in favor of common senses in the amount of $20,000 for continued uses of their benefits platform. Bill Number 1798. Resolution amending Resolution Number 699, which authorized the city to enter into a professional services agreement with PNA Group for services relating to the administration of the city's Consolidated Omnibus Budget Reconciliation Act program by exercising the written option to extend the term of the contract by two years and a cost not to exceed $90,000.
Madam President.
Thank you. Yes, Councilman Kraus.
Good morning. May I offer a motion to waive the rules on Bill 1797 so it may appear on tomorrow's standing committee agenda?
Thank you, Councilman. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Aye.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
The bill will appear on tomorrow's standing committee agenda. Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Lavelle, Chair of Finance and Law.
Madam President.
Councilman Lavelle presents Bill Number 1799. Resolution authorizing pursuant to Chapter 210 of the City Code, the mayor and director of the Department of Public Works to accept a donation from the Pittsburgh Vintage Grand Crepe Association of Jersey Barriers valued at $9,349.20. Bill Number 1800. Resolution authorizing the issuing of a warrant in favor of Paul Surgeon in the amount of $4,999.29 in settlement of a claim for damage to a parked vehicle from a city ES vehicle on January 5th of 2021. Bill Number 1801. Resolution authorizing the issuing of a warrant in favor of Daniel Williams in an amount of $5,775 in settlement of a claim for damage to a stopped vehicle from a city fire vehicle in emergency response on July 11th, 2021. Bill Number 1802. Resolution authorizing the issuing of a warrant in favor of Meyer Ankovich and Scott for professional legal services in connection with ethics hearing board matters for an amount not to exceed $12,259. Bill Number 1803. Resolution authorizing the mayor and director of the Office of Management and Budget to enter into an agreement with one PGH for the completion of a guaranteed personal income project as approved in the city's American Rescue Plan at a cost not to exceed $2,500,000. Bill Number 1804. Resolution authorizing the mayor and director of the Office of Management and Budget to enter into an agreement with the Pittsburgh Parking Authority for the completion of the Kirkwood Avenue Lot Project as approved in the city's American Rescue Plan at a cost not to exceed $80,000. Bill Number 1805. Resolution authorizing the mayor and director of the Office of Management and Budget to enter into an agreement with the PWSA for the completion of lead line replacement projects as approved in the city of Pittsburgh's American Rescue Plan at a cost not to exceed $17,500,000. Bill Number 1806. Resolution authorizing the mayor and director of the Office of Management and Budget to enter into an agreement with the URA for the completion of projects approved in the city of Pittsburgh's American Rescue Plan at a cost not to exceed $74,878,811.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. And Councilman O'Connor, Chair of Public Safety Services. Good morning. Thank you, Councilman.
Thank you, Madam President.
Councilman O'Connor presents Bill Number 1807. Ordinance, Amending and Supplement in the City of Pittsburgh Code Title VI, Article 1 by amending Chapter 601 to more clearly define litter and illegal dumping violations and to update penalties to include community restitution. Bill Number 1815. Ordinance, amending the Pittsburgh Code Title IX, Zone in Article IV. Plan Development District Hazelwood Greens, specially planned district by amending certain texts, erasing certain texts and/or replacing certain texts within the zoning code as follows.
Thank you. And Councilman O'Connor.
Thank you, Madam President. I need to make a motion to waive the rules on 1815. We are sending this bill over to the Planning Commission.
Thank you. We have a motion. We have a second.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Councilman. The bill will appear on tomorrow's standing committee agenda. And Councilman, or Councilwoman Strasburger, Chair of Innovation Performance and Asset Management. Good morning, Councilwoman.
Good morning. No new papers, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilwoman. And Councilman Wilson, Chair of Land Use and Economic Development.
Madam President.
Councilman Wilson, Bill Number 88. Ordinance, amending and supplement in the Pittsburgh Code Title IV, Public Property Article I. Public right of ways by amending Chapter 420, Uniform Street Naming and Addressing to Update and Clarify Sub chapters. Bill Number 1809. Ordinance, amending and supplement in the Pittsburgh Code Title I, Administrative Article 11, Human Resources, Chapter 189. Leaves of absence, loss of pregnancy by adding language to establish fully paid bereavement leave for every city employee who experiences pregnancy loss.
Thank you. And I have myself, Chair of Hearings, have one communication. Thank you, Madam Clerk.
Council President Kell Smith presents Bill Number 1810. Communication from Kevin Paulus, Director of the Office of Management and Budget, submitting the City of Pittsburgh Quarterly Financial and Performance Report for the period ending June 30th of 2021.
Thank you, Kevin. Motion to read, receive and file.
Move.
Second. Any discussion? Thank you. Oh, I'm sorry. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. We will now move on to unfinished business. Any unfinished business before council? Seeing none, the next order of business is reports of committee for final action. Councilman Daniel Lavelle, Committee on Finance and Law.
President.
Thank you, Councilman.
Councilman Lavelle presents Bill Number 1784. Report of the Committee on Finance and Law for August 25th, 2021 with an affirmative recommendation. Bill Number 1729. Resolution further amending Resolution Number 816 entitled, Resolution Adopting and Approving the 2016 Capital Budget and Approving the 2016 through 2021 Capital Improvement Program by Reducing Signage by $15,000 and Transferring Those Funds to the URA for Sidewalk Repairs.
Thank you. You've heard the reading and the title of the bills. Is there any discussion on the bills? Seeing none, the bills are now ready for final action. All in favor of the passage of the bills? Will vote aye when the name is called. Those opposed will vote no. Will the clerk please call the rule?
Reverend Burgess.
Aye.
Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mr. Kraus.
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle.
Aye.
Mr. O'Connor.
Aye.
Ms. Strasburger.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Mrs. Kell Smith, President.
Aye.
Eyes nine, no zero.
Thank you. The bills have been received. The legally required number of votes is finally passed. That moves us on to Councilman Anthony Coghill, Committee on Public Works.
You, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilman.
Councilman Coghill presents Bill Number 1785. Report of the Committee on Public Works for August 25th, 2021 with an affirmative recommendation. Bill Number 1742. Resolution amending Resolution 127 entitled, 322 through 324 Arlington Avenue in the 18th Ward of the city experienced land movement that threatens the safe maintenance and operation of the street for public travel. In order to stabilize the slope and restore the street, the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure must acquire the property at 322 and 324 for construction of a retaining structure. Resolution 746 authorized the acquisition. This amendment to that resolution amends the JDE account information to reflect the 2020 operating budget. This resolution is to authorize the acquisition of the property at a cost not to exceed $10,000 while the project costs will be legislated separately and paid for by the capital budget to update the operating budget year for 2021.
Thank you. You've heard the reading and the title of the bills. Is there any discussion on the bills? Seeing none, the bills are now ready for final action. All in favor of the passage? Will vote aye when the name is called. Those opposed will vote no. Will the clerk please call the rule?
Reverend Burgess.
Aye.
Coghill.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mr. Kraus.
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle.
Aye.
Ms. Strasburger.
Aye.
Wilson.
Aye.
Mrs. Kell Smith, President.
Aye.
Eyes nine, no zero.
Thank you. The bills have been received. The legally required number of votes are finally passed. And that moves us on to Councilman Bobby Wilson, Committee on Land Use and Economic Development.
You, Madam President.
Councilman Wilson presents Bill Number 1786. Report of the Committee on Land Use and Economic Development for August 25th, 2021 with an affirmative recommendation. Bill Number 1778. Resolution amending Resolution Number 487 entitled, Resolution Further Amending Resolution Number 772. Resolution adopting and approving the 2013 Capital Budget and the 2013 CDBG Program and approving the 2013 through 2018 Capital Improvement Program by reducing various CDBG line items by $7,032.21 and increasing demolition of condemned buildings by $7,032.21 by correcting a J.D. Edwards job number.
Thank you. You've heard the reading and the title of the bills. Is there any discussion on the bills? Seeing none, the bills are now ready for final, final action. All in favor of the passage? Will vote aye when the name is called. Those opposed will vote no. Will the clerk please call the rule?
Reverend Burgess.
Aye.
Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mr. Kraus.
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle.
Aye.
Mr. O'Connor.
Aye.
Ms. Strasburger.
Aye.
Wilson.
Aye.
Mrs. Kell Smith, President.
Aye.
Eyes nine, no zero.
Thank you. The bills have been received. The legally required number of votes are finally passed. And that moves us on to our final committee of the day. Councilwoman Deborah Gross, Committee on Intergovernmental Affairs.
Madam President.
Councilwoman Gross presents Bill Number 1787. Report of the Committee on Intergovernmental Affairs for August 25th of 2021 with an affirmative recommendation. Bill Number 1746. Resolution adopting plan revision to the City of Pittsburgh's Official Sewer Facilities Plan for the proposed city's Department of Public Works Fourth Division Maintenance Facility located at the 400 block of Matthews Avenue. Bill Number 1750. Resolution authorizing the mayor and director of the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure to enter into a contribution and corporation agreement with PWSA for work in connection with the Winchester Drive Project. Bill Number 1751. Resolution authorizing the mayor and director of the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure to enter into a contribution and corporation agreement with PWSA for work in connection with the Nobles Lane Project. Bill Number 1752. Resolution authorizing the mayor and director of the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure to enter into a contribution and corporation agreement with PWSA for work in connection with the Fleury Way Project.
Thank you. You've heard the reading and the title of the bills. Is there any discussion on the bills? Councilman Kraus.
Thank you, Madam President. I would like to speak to Bill 1746 and the official sewage facilities plan for our proposed division. I know Ughill, Council President, Theresa Kell Smith and myself are very excited to see the project actually beginning to move. I know it's been a very long time. I want to thank everyone for their patience that this has taken much longer than we would have thought it was going to take. But we, I would like to reassure everyone south of the river that Council President and Councilman Coghill and I represent that this facility truly will be state of the art and it will be the finest division in the city. And it is well deserved by our fourth division public works employees, which have to tolerate a toxic building for decades that they never should have had to, to tolerate. So again, just to thank everybody for their patience. We know it's taken a long time to do this, but you can see it's incremental, but it is moving. And we're going to have a state of the art public works facility south of the river. So I'm really excited to see it happen. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. With that said, I want to thank you both because your leadership really is bringing this, this facility to the southwest, south of the river. And I, and I do know that when we went into that meeting together, every one of us was very firm in our position that this absolutely was, had to be done. But I think with your seniority and leadership and with Councilman But I think with your seniority and leadership and with Councilman Coghill's, I'll say his personality, and I was the tough one, okay? So with that said, I'll just say, I think it was all of us working together really made it, made it great. But I do know that this was a very big priority to the two of you. So thank you both very much for your work. Any other discussion? Seeing none, the bills are now ready for final action. All in favor of the passage of vote aye when their name is called. Those opposed will vote no. Will the clerk please call the rule?
Reverend Burgess.
Aye.
Coghill.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Kraus.
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle.
Aye.
Mr. O'Connor.
Aye.
Ms. Strasburger.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Mrs. Kell Smith, President.
Aye.
Eyes nine, nose zero.
Thank you. The bills have been received. The legally required number of votes are finally passed. And with that said, we'll move on to motions and resolutions. And I have some meeting announcements. And I'm going to begin with number one. And the most important to me today is that my mother turns one hundred today.
Oh, my God.
Thank you. Thank you. Hearing her stories have been amazing. She's lived through, she was born when World War One was ending. She lived through World War Two. She lived through several pandemics. She's lived through the Great Depression, and her stories are amazing. I tell everybody, she tells me the story about when she first voted and how she was so eager to vote and she hasn't missed a vote. And she was so eager to vote that she had to wait for her dad. And I said, well, what was taking him so long? She said, honey, he had to crank the car. So it talks about her and her story. So I just, I mean, she's an amazing woman who raised a lot of, a lot of, a lot of women and a lot of people outside of our family. She's raised a lot of kids. And so I just, I think a lot of people in Oakland, the Hill, and Uptown remember, and the South Side, remember my mom, I hope, in a very fond way that she's done a lot to, and took care of a lot of people. So happy birthday, Mom. So tomorrow, Wednesday, September first, at ten a.m., council will hold their standing committee, our standing committee's meeting. Speaker registration closes at nine a.m. tomorrow morning. Just a reminder that Monday, September sixth, is Labor Day, and city council and the clerks' offices will be closed. But I am going to add that even though there's no Labor Day parade, our Allegheny County Labor Council is holding a weekend of service. And so if you can join them for something, that would be wonderful. But I especially want to encourage people to participate in the blood drive in partnership with the Pittsburgh Penguins and the American Red Cross of Western Pennsylvania. And I think that our blood supply is critically low. I think we have something like an eight-day supply. So I think it's really important, so if you're able, or you or your family are able to contribute to the blood drive, it will be held September third from one to sixth at the F N B Gate of P P G Paints Arena at Center Avenue and Fullerton Street. The drive is open to the public, but appointments are strongly encouraged to ensure social distancing. Donors may sign up for the drive at redcrossblood.org. To access the online schedule, donors should enter the sponsor code A F L C I O in the red box titled Find, Find a Drive. And it's located in the upper right-hand corner. If you have any questions, please contact us for the Allegheny County Labor Council. But please, if you can donate at all that day, please, please do so. And a few other things. We are working on the public schools, the Pittsburgh Public Schools and the city council districts reapportionment commissions. The reapportionment of city council districts requires nine members to serve, one appointed by each council district representative. So please submit your, your suggestions, your nominations to Madam Clerk and myself. We also have, the school district reapportionment commission will consist of seven members, three appointed by city council, three appointed by Mayor Peduto, and one appointed by the mayor of Mount Oliver. The commission must be formed by September thirtieth. So please submit the names of your nominees no later than the end of business day on September seventh. Also, we still need nominations from the members for the CPRB. There are four seats that have, that have impending term expirations, two of which are now vacant. The seats are as follows. Council seat one, number one, seat is vacant, needs a successor to complete the term ending ten thirty-one twenty-one. We need three nominees. Council district, or council seat number two, law enforcement professional only, term expires ten thirty-one twenty-one, reapportionment request, or reappointment request by council to term expiring eleven one twenty-one to eleven thirty-one twenty-five. So that's a long time. Council seat number four, term expires ten thirty-one twenty-one, reappointment request by council to term eleven one twenty-one to eleven, or to ten thirty-one twenty-five. And mayoral seat number five, seat vacant due to resignation, needs a successor to complete the term ending ten thirty-one twenty-one. We need three nominees. City council is required to provide a total of six nominees. Three council subcommittees have been created containing three members of each, of council in each. Please work with each other to submit two names per subcommittee. If you have not done so by now, please submit the names to the city clerk and myself as soon as possible so that the names can be introduced in, by way of resolution. That's a lot, but it's also come to you in several emails and in a hard copy. Thank you, Madam Clerk, for keeping us all this on track. Anything for members? Councilman Lavelle, then Kraus, then Coghill.
Thank you. I just wanted to alert my colleagues that I will be late for tomorrow's meeting. The groundbreaking for the F N B Tower on the Lower Hill is tomorrow at eleven a.m.
Congratulations.
So I will be late, but thankfully, our president has agreed to chair the meeting until our return. Thank you.
Yeah. Congratulations. I told him, in the text, I said, they'll be begging for you to come back after I chair the meeting tomorrow. Thank you. Congratulations, Councilman. Councilman Kraus.
How long is yours? I'm going to try to be brief, but I'll be.
It'll be really long. I'm not going to be long.
All right. And then I'll go.
Okay.
I have a, hey, I have a time limit for council members, just like the speakers.
So, no, Madam President, and thank you, Councilman Kraus. I just wanted to bring to your attention, I was presented with a petition from many city workers this past couple weeks. They've been gathering signatures, and I'll just read it to you. Has to do with the offset, pension offset, and it is petition to change pension offset. Any employee hired after two thousand and seven, when you draw your first social security check, the city of Pittsburgh takes half of your pension. We, the undersigned, want that changed so we can keep our full pension. So, and I agree with these folks. We all, I think most of us all fall under that, anybody, you know, prior to two thousand and seven. So, Madam Clerk, I want to officially present you with this.
Thank you. And we'll get copies of that to, to the members if, if you'd like to see a copy of it. Or, Madam Clerk, can you keep it in your office and members can come see it?
Right.
Is that okay? Less paperwork.
Madam President, I know you've been working on it, and I also know Director Bill Urbannick has, you know, been crunching some numbers as to what it would take to make that happen. So, 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 yeah, they're unified, you know, it makes sense, and they're trying.
I want to be clear that council's leadership has been working collectively. It's been Reverend Burgess, Councilman Lavelle, and myself working with the administration and Bill Urbannick and our budget office and the unions. So we're working with a lot of people. We actually have a meeting on Thursday to discuss. So I, I don't want to interrupt you, but I want to make it clear that I'm not doing this alone, that there's a lot of people leading the way.
Yep. They're happy. They're, they're, they know that we're fighting for them. So, so, you know, protect their retirement funds.
Thank you. Any other members? Councilman Kraus.
All right. Thank you very much. Just briefly on the pension offset, if I may, it has been a point of discussion amongst members for quite some time now. Madam President and I have talked at length about it. This council has uniformly defended the right of workers across the board in the city. Anytime there is a, a support that is needed within the workforce, we're always there to, to support. We're front and center to be vocal in our support. And we believe that it's, it's imperative that we offer the same kind of support and dedication to the employees of the city of Pittsburgh here as well, too. And that really is one of the heart and soul of wanting to revisit the pension offset and to see if there's, if there is not a better way to serve our, our employees. But what I really wanted to talk about this morning, Madam President, is the gentleman that called in this morning about Cosmo. I don't even know where to begin. I'm going to try to stay away from the number of times nine one one has responded to Cosmo and the, the bad neighbor they have been from the day they opened that, that establishment. And what I would like to focus on, though, is a meeting that we had with, under the leadership of Senator Jay Costa. I was in attendance. State Representative Jessica Benham was in attendance, Chief of Staff Gilman was in attendance, and a slew of representation from Pennsylvania Liquor Control Board and liquor enforcement agencies. And among many things that we discussed and how we pleaded our case, Cosmo kept coming up again and again and again and again. And the attorney for the Liquor Control Board basically, in a very paraphrased way, said to us that our only recourse is really to basically live with it, that we keep a record of the infractions that take place, and that when the time comes in two years for license renewal, then we could present the complaints that we have against the establishment, and they would be taken under consideration for the license renewal. And our objection was, you know, it's on fire now. You know, every, every, there's not, I don't think there's a person in the South Side that does not have an opinion about this, this, and there's a few other ones, but this one in particular, that has been allowed to operate just reckless, with reckless disregard for the businesses on the street and for the residents that have to live there and the participants that come to visit the South Side. And so I share his frustration, and I, I'm very frustrated with the state's inability or the lack of action by state liquor enforcement agencies to, one, to tackle this, this establishment head-on. In the fourteen years that I've had the privilege to serve on city council, we have closed about, between eleven to maybe fifteen problematic alcohol licenses on the East Carson Street Quarter. And the only way that we have been able to close those establishments is after an act of violence has been associated with it. So it must take place inside or in very, very, I mean, outside the front door proximity to that licensed establishment, and it has to be an act of violence, like a shooting or a knife-in. And then the district attorney will step in and use his power to shutter that alcohol establishment. That's the recourse that we are offered to deal with problematic alcohol licenses under the state liquor code. It is to wait until it melts down to the point that there is someone either shot or stabbed, then the district attorney can, can step in. Are you flipping kidding me? This is where we are. This is where we are, and it is the most archaic and, and counterproductive system that we could possibly be operating under. And that's not just the South Side. That's any one of us that finds ourselves with a problematic alcohol license establishment in the council districts that we represent and our recourse to be able to shutter a, a, an establishment that is causing that kind of, of mayhem with total reckless disregard for the health, safety, welfare, peace, and morals of the community. So people need to know that. That's, that is where we are, and that is where our power lies. Live with it, keep a record of it. When they come up for, for renewal in two years, we'll talk about it. Madness. It's just madness. And you can see that being amplified day after day after day after day after day in the East Carson Street Quarter. And it's not just the East Carson Street Quarter. Every single one of us can fall victim to this kind of archaic approached alcohol licensing and the wealth offensive. So those are my comments.
Do you have anything for any other members? I just want to make a comment to that, Councilman Kraus. You've done a really huge job in trying to clean up the South Side. And I'm sorry that you're going through this, but I do want to say that I think that maybe we should have some post-agendas or some kind of public meeting so that we can draw this attention to the public a little bit better because it, and people do forget about it. And our only recourse may seem that we have to wait every two years, but there's elections that come in between there. And I think the public needs to know, you know, what we're dealing with and, and what the challenges are on the state level, because I'm sure that they have some concerns and some challenges as well. So I just want to, I think that maybe having something more publicly that we can discuss because we have the same situation. We had two bars next to one another in a small section that's predominantly residential and same thing. You know, there has been a lot of violent crime, violent crime associated with it or indirectly associated with it. So with that said, I'd love to have, if you, maybe we'll talk about better ways that we can draw public attention to it.
If I may, Madam Clerk, and I'm going to try to get off my soapbox. I spent this entire weekend on the phone with constituency, call after call after call after call after call after call after call. And one constituent said to me, this is where we are. She said, oh, for the days when we only worried about kids peeing on our plants. That's where, that's where we are. It, it is bedlam. It is absolute bedlam. And, and every step of the way, the, the state appears to tie our hands on a local level to be able to deal with state-issued, state-granted, state-enforced alcohol licenses. And we're only supposed to expend our, our local public safety resources to clean up a mess that should never have happened.
Agreed. With that said, thank you, Councilman. Any other members?
Madam President.
Yes, Councilwoman Strasburger. I apologize.
No, that's okay. I just wanted to say, Councilman Kraus, I know how hard you're working to keep things safe in your neighborhoods, and every weekend, there's a new challenge, and I really, I really empathize with you and commend you for the work that you are doing. I'm with you. Anytime, anytime you want to take on the state to give the cities like Pittsburgh more autonomy, I will stand with you because there are, as we know, far too many ways that the state legislature and the state municipal code handcuffs us from doing what we need to do and what's best for our cities. So count me in on taking on the state legislature in that way.
So, Councilwoman, thank you. And I appreciate your kind comments and, and your willingness, your willingness to assist. The, the, the system, it, it does not serve us any longer. And it, it is, it's, 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 it's just become dinosaur-y. We, we have to step up into the age in which we live in. My hope, my sincere hope had been that when we came out of pandemic, we were, we would have once and for all realized the importance of food and beverage business. We saw how they suffered. We saw the hit that they took. We saw the hit that we took in tax revenue that comes from responsible operations of food and beverage business, and that we would come out of pandemic in a total reboot, understanding the importance of these businesses, how to protect them, how to nurture them, how to encourage them to be productive and contributing citizens and wonderful funders to the budget, which we desperately need. And anything but that has happened. It's as though the entire system has gone completely off the rails, completely off the rails, and it's, it's unlike anything that we have ever seen before. And this doesn't make it any easier for anyone who has to suffer through it. We're not the only city dealing with this. Every major city across the United States is dealing with the same thing. It is though the world has gone off the rails. But I appreciate your support, Councilwoman, and, and your kind words over the last couple